Welcome to everyone. We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. On August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six thirty and we are in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have Mr. Hune is excused and all other members of the council are present. We are also joined on the dais by Mr. Pyle, our city manager and Ms. Kamik, our city recorder. Our opening ceremony will be Mr. Norvelt tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Will everyone please join with us in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. And we now have the minutes of July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. I will turn it to the council for discussion or emotion on the minutes.
And move to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those pass. And I will note that we have Councilman Hune on Zoom with us now. All right, we will now have our public comment period. It is limited to thirty minutes. And any person is willing or is able to speak, please come to the mic and give us your name and address if you did not sign up on the signup sheet. Otherwise, just your name will work. Each comment should be limited to five minutes. We will have a total of thirty minutes. Please come to the mic. Address your comments to the mayor. It's not a time for discussion. It's time for you to voice your concerns or whatever you would like to speak about. And you may only speak once during this comment period. And the council staff will have time to comment after within the thirty minutes. Now, tonight we have the public hearing for the tax increase. So if you're wishing to speak about that, you should have picked up a number at the back and that'll be at a later time. This is for other issues. So we'll start with our first person. Mister. Yeah, yours is counsel, so, Mr. Whitaker. Okay. And then can we get help lowering the mic, please?
Well, I hope what I have to say only takes five minutes. If not, I can come again next week. I'll be coming here a lot. For now, last week when I spoke to you, I was talking about building a playground in Fairborn Park. Tonight, I'm going to talk about my run for governor in Utah in two thousand and twenty-four. And I have this invention called mechanical biodegradation. Well, mechanical biodegradation is a idea I have about how to deal with wax. Really anywhere in the world. It's a matter of the dust that shall return. There was dirt in the form of either clay, sand, pot, and not much land. For this type of thing, we'd be in an area of being ten square miles new landfill. The object isn't just to burn the everything with scrubbers and so on, balls. Those don't melt in the bottle. And then what you do is you get the situation full of dry. That means it pre-strikes the bottle. And then you can push it in a pot, stand, topsoil, collect. And it's my idea for the future of the state of Utah. As far as that goes. I'd like to just introduce myself to you guys. A prospective governor in two thousand and twenty-four. And to use this mechanical biodegradation as one of my many ideas for that particular governance. Hopefully, the place where this will take place will be about, what do you say, forty miles outside of Christ. Could be a ten-square-mile facility designed to do this sort of thing. And it would be what we'd call a dirt factory. And I guess you would have perhaps to make it a science, you know, like a dam's building a dam someplace, you could do things this way. It all into that. That's my idea. Another thing is thanks for governor in two thousand and twenty-four. I wish, especially I would hope eventually they will vote. Right now, for the district number thirty-three in the state. I'm not officially a Democrat. I'm a writer. I think, you know, what area I'm talking about when I talked about playgrounds for Fairborn Park. I had a question would be, who owns the land? Would we need to have a vote or a referendum vote on a situation? Other than that, disqualified. Down with this. My idea for governor, you know, I like it. You can make it in the sand. You can make it in the top story. You can make it in the place. So I don't know what it would cost. When I can find out. Is that about, I think that kind of covers in general, there are other things involving increasing the government of the state. Think about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker, Mr. Murphy.
My clock started. I think some of you know why I'm here. I sent out some pictures that I was hoping could be put up on the big screen for the audience to see and everybody to see, but I understand that's not allowed. The pictures that I've taken, we have, I have some new residents on the corner of my cul-de-sac. They've got about, I don't know, twelve cars. At least I got some support from parking enforcement. They came out and sighted one truck and one car. The car was facing the wrong direction on the road. The truck was double parked alongside that, that car on the road. And the sad part about it is the lady that was in the car that got the ticket for parking the wrong direction. Last night when she came home, she, instead of parking where she had been parking, she parked in front of the fire hydrant. So how do these people get driver's licenses if they don't know the driving rules? Is a big problem, I think, that we have. I've sent pictures of cars parked on the lawn over the weekend. Hopefully, you all have those pictures that you can look at. Code enforcement, like I've said before, don't want to make a lot of people mad. I think it's very lacking. Down the street from me, there's a house that's got six cars parked in the driveway. One of them leaves occasionally, but they, it's a two-car driveway and they back in on the third side. So therefore, by doing that, they have about six cars parked out on the street all of the time. We can't go into their yard and nail them, which I think we should because of them not being licensed and insured and taken care of. I think we should be able to go in on that kind of a case and do that. That same house, as far as maintenance go, it's right at where Alice weighed deadheads into King Arthur. There are weeds in the driveway that they park in that are as tall as the cars. Early this year, when I had a ride along, it was prior to us being anything to do anything to people for not taking care of their yards. The same house has a flowerbed down the north side with bushes, weeds well above the fence line. Now, this is also a house that's owned by Hispanic people. Very few females live in these houses. It's all Hispanic males. They don't care. And we don't do anything about it because they are in the country illegally anyway. And we do nothing about that. So they feel like they are untouchable. The same house on my cul-de-sac, I got home from my trip the other night. There was a big Ford pickup and a dump trailer parked about twenty feet off the side of the cul-de-sac, more towards the middle of the cul-de-sac. You know, I don't know what we can do about this. Like I say, I sent the pictures. Hopefully, you can see it. Like I say, I would have liked them to have been up there so that the audience can see what I'm talking about. So everybody doesn't think I'm a real horse's butt. But if we don't get some people stepping up and doing something about code enforcement and cracking the whip, there's not going to be one of you people that's going to be proud that I'm a councilperson or a city manager in West Valley City. Because we're, we are deteriorating fast. I would like to see something happen before it's too late. But I don't know. We just don't seem to have any importance. Right next to the other house, we have a family that on Dirt and Dog Day, they went in and took out their whole front yard. That was two months ago. It's still dirt. I guess their greenery now is the weeds. This has been a house from hell since the subdivision was built. But then across the street from the house on my cul-de-sac, I sent in a picture of a beautiful, well-maintained house. That house is owned by Mahonre, Mahonri Gomez. An Hispanic man that is very proud of his citizenship. Took him ten years to get it. Him and his wife maintain a beautiful house. So if you want it, you can have it. If you don't want it.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor. We're going to take a sec. We think we might have knocked the microphone cord loose moving the podium, so they're going to check that real quick.
Been wired here.
Test, test. Jim V. Sock. Got to love it. A city attorney and a PR person working on electronics. I'm going to go right into code enforcement a little also. Looking throughout the city. We had some news once again. West Valley City code enforcement, you know, brown lawns and stuff. We talked about guidance and something from you guys putting out that brown is the new green, as long as it's maintained short and we, you know, we don't want to see weeds growing, but we want to see a nice even lawn. In the response that I was kind of feeling you guys were putting out, it's like, well, you know, we'll just go with it and, you know, we've kind of given them the direction. Obviously, from the top, they're not getting the direction that they need. It's a secondary violation. Well, it, it needs to, you guys need to give them direction, you know, that they're not out there citing people for a brown lawn. Now, if it's weeds and I can understand that, that's a whole different story. And we all know how to press is, you know, on, on that story. So but I, I believe they need guidance because they don't get it from the top. That's enough I'll say about that. That leads me into park maintenance. Just had a nice grand opening of a new park, beautiful park. But, and then we hear again excuses. We're understaffed, we're understaffed. Well, part of the reason why we're understaffed is the pay. When they can go to South Jordan and make more in the starting wage, it's part of now pay isn't all the fix, but it's part of the fix. And you're losing employees. And then you, you, they have employees that shouldn't really be there and they, they can they can go talk amongst themselves and find out who those employees are, but they're like being held hostage because they need the bodies to do the jobs. The comment that I, I talked to a lot of employees that they talked to me, and I'll never bring up their names, but the, they can barely get the grass cut in our parks. Today, I was talking with a resident. With the cost of going to lagoon, going all these other places, people can't afford it with everything going up, so they're going to our parks. They're taking their families to our parks and what they want to see is a clean, well-kept park. They don't want to see trash. They don't want to see weeds. It leads me into the, the bump track at the skate park. There's weeds that are four feet tall around the bump track. And there's a huge hole in the bump track. Now, somebody put a chain with a pipe across it. But the kids use that as a jump. And so it, it's not very well-maintained and we shouldn't let something like that sit. And it looks really, really bad for our city. Centennial Park is, you know, our biggest park. A lot of people come in and out of there. And when you see all those weeds and I know we're supposed to be building a bigger bump track and all this other stuff, but it's got to be maintained until, until it happens. If we're expecting our residents to maintain their yards, cities got to maintain their properties. Let's see, let's get some of my hometowns, some great stuff in my hometown going on. You skate. They just completed today. Chill came out and taught about twelve of our youths how to skateboard. Chill came out, they, they on their own dime and provided the pads, hats, jerseys, and the boards. We got twelve new people that will be using our, our skate park and they've progressed from the beginning where they could barely step on a board. They're out there doing flips and I don't even know all the names. I'm not a skater, but it was great to see them progress and the smiles on their face. The the pool party that we had with my hometown and then the watermelon with this, with the city doing, that was a great, great, great event. Everybody in the pool was able to come and get pizza. It was a very, very fun, huge event. We figure, we fed over five hundred people with the my hometown pizza and stuff. I'm running out of time, so I will yield my last thirty-eight seconds.
Hey, thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak? Come on up and give us your name and address, please. I think we have it from last time.
Okay, no worries. I have Miles Wynn, twenty-seven sixty-six west, twenty-eight ninety south, eight-four one-one-nine, West Valley City. So the one thing that I really want to just keep beating a dead horse, I guess, even though I'm not into beating animals by any means, but the speeding issue in my neighborhood is still totally a thing. I spoke with an officer last week who said that they were going to do something about it. I haven't really been reached out about that yet. And then coincidentally, like the next couple of days, there was somebody speeding around like one in the morning in a white truck. They smashed into my neighbor's car and took out two mailboxes. So I don't know if speed bumps are going to fix that, but again, it's just kind of reinforcing that it's, it's a pretty big issue in my neighborhood and I would imagine other neighborhoods too. I just think that putting some speed bumps in residential areas or dips or something to slow people down is going to be beneficial to everybody. I mean, I got kids in my neighborhood that are riding their scooters around, their bicycles, things like that. Something bad is going to happen. So I hope it doesn't, but that's just something that I'm concerned about as a, you know, resident of West Valley. The other thing that I wanted to chat about was, I was in the study session and I heard the mention of the graffiti issues. And that's no bueno, essentially. It's taken up a lot of our tax dollars, I imagine. But the one thing that I kind of wanted to put into consideration is like, is it gang graffiti or is it art? And if it's gang graffiti, like, you know, I don't know how much there's going to be done to be able to stop that. But if it's legit art, like maybe we want to think about putting up some free walls and things like that where people can come and practice and, and things of that nature. And then if it's gang graffiti, like, I imagine that some of these kids are probably getting busted every once in a while. And if that happens, like, I would hate to just think that they're just going to become part of the system. And that, you know, not, I mean, maybe these kids need to be fined a little bit or, you know, given some justice or something, but I feel like we should also make sure that they're being, you know, pointed towards places like the HERC, the Hip-Hop Education Resource Center in Salt Lake. I don't know if there's a, you know, equal facility here in West Valley or not. Or pointing them towards like choose gang free and things like that, just to, you know, again, make sure that they're again, not just becoming part of the system and, you know, rebelling and, and things of that nature. And then I also heard Councilman Christiansen mention the lack of advertisement for some of our events. And I kind of want to agree with that because I never see anything in my mailbox like about these events. Like, I don't even know they're happening or anything like that. And what also kind of like tipped me off, not ticked me off, but just like was a little confusing to me was Farmer's Market on Thursday. And so like most of our community is probably working class, blue collar. I don't have the time to make those, you know, events on a Thursday afternoon after work or whenever it is. I don't even know because I didn't hear about it. But I understand that maybe you don't want to do it on Saturday to compete with like the big one in Salt Lake and stuff like that, but I think probably a better attendance if you did it on a weekend as well as probably more vendors and things of that nature. But that's really all I got today. So, yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Was there anyone else from the audience that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, come on. Is this for just open comment, not the tax increase?
Yeah.
No, the tax increase will be just a little bit later. Yeah, so you could do this one now and then the other. So name, address, and I don't recognize you, so a phone number.
My name is Wilmer Fajardo. My address is twenty-seven ninety-seven South Power Hill Way in West Valley City. And I want to thank you, everybody. You do the best to keep our city nicer and nicer every year. I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine and I see a lot of changes, you know, and I feel I think I agree with that gentleman right there. Some people from different countries, they come here and I wish they can learn the American system. Is to be nice to your neighbors, to implement the good habit, keep a nice yard. It makes a big difference. So I think he's right, you know. Some people from, it don't matter what country they come from, but they make a mess. You know, I used to work for apartment complex in others part of the city and we have to keep implementing saying, hey, please, you, you cannot change your oil in the, in the street in here, you know. You, you got to go to the shop to do that kind of stuff. You know what I mean? So in, in my area where I live is close to Coles, you know, Pet's, Pet's Co. And right in the area is a Chinese restaurant. They, for some reason, they open and they stay in business only for two weeks and then they close again. But the area where they're supposed to take care is bad. So me and my wife, we walk every night and we keep saying, hey, why it's still like that? And nobody says something about it. So I'm here to say that, you know. It's right in fifty-six. I, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. It's sad because I'm like, hey, we're knowing. I'm sorry, what I'm going to say, we're knowing Honduras or we're knowing Africa. We're in United States. I'm proud to be an American, you know, it took me years, but I'm really proud to be an American, you know. But like I say, I'm agree with that gentleman over there, hundred percent. Some of my people, they make a mess. So we need to kind of give a warning to those people, you know. And, and it not necessary has to be from Latin America. It could be Russian, Chinese, Taiwanese, India, whatever, you know, but we have to follow our good samples, the our heritage. Set up sample for being a good citizen, being a good city, you know, so if you guys can please check that area. You know, that'd be really nice. But once again, I'm, I'm very happy for what you guys do, you know. I know you work hard for what you do and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else that wanted to speak during the comment period? Okay, and Nicole, did we have anyone online? Okay. All right, we will close the comment period and I'll Okay. All right, we will close the comment period and I'll ask Mr. Pyle, did you have any follow-up comments?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
And to the council, any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah. Appreciate your comments from the public. I I will just repeat, um, what I've said before, that code enforcement is an issue. I know, um, Assistant City Manager went out a couple of weeks ago in my area and um, found twenty-two, twenty-two violations. Is that about right? Um, you can do that in about two minutes in my area, so, um, it really is a problem. I I I don't know what we can do, but I'd like to do something.
All right. Well, and I will agree with the last gentleman who was up. I turned that property in last week as well, so the attention is there and they are working with them. All right. We will now go to our public hearings. Our first one will be for the tax increase. And I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Welch, our Finance Director for a presentation regarding the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, for those of you that have, uh, this is maybe your first time visiting with us and going through this process. The presentation of the budget is a requirement that we hold a public hearing for the adoption of any fiscal year's budget so that we, uh, get the approval of the elected officials to spend the money in the most appropriate way. So this is that public hearing. We can, if there is no property tax adjustment, uh, that budget will be normally adopted in May or June. Uh, because there was a need this year, um, there's proposed property tax adjustment, and that's being held in August. So it gives us a little bit more time to evaluate it. And then there's also prescribed public notice process which we have gone through. So I'll go through this presentation and talk to you a little bit about that. And hopefully answer any questions you might have about the process and what brought us to this position. So there's a number of things that, uh, go into preparing a budget for an entity like West Valley City. As you can imagine, it's a very complex process. We have a lot of different oper- operations that need to be addressed. Uh, everything from public safety to community development. We've heard a lot about, uh, about code enforcement and parks. Um, there's a lot of things that go on here. As such, we start the budget process in usually about November, which is kind of interesting because here we are already in August, so we get about a three-month reprieve and we'll be into it into it again. So, um, the way I would answer the question about why does it take so long to put together a budget is that it's a living document. It's something that we, uh, evaluate and we keep a finger on the pulse, um, throughout the year. So there's nothing really that's a surprise unless there's something that happens in the economy or something that happens in the operation of the city that we need to address. And because of that, there is a process of adjusting that budget throughout the, uh, the year when the time arises. So we'll see some of those as we go forward. The the budget is, um, prescribed by state law that we have to have a balanced budget. We have to match our revenues with our expenditures. Uh, there are, unlike the federal government that could just print dollars, uh, West Valley City, along with the other taxing entities and agencies of the state, must present a balanced budget, and that's what we have to to, um, present to you today. There's a number of governmental requirements that we have to make this budget. Uh, we have to, um, comply with, uh, regulation from the federal government, regulation from the state. Uh, we also have a number, number of entities that look at the budget, um, that like bond rating agencies. We have the, uh, Securities Exchange Commission, a bunch of different agencies that examine the document to make sure that we're living within the things that we should do and they they can get a picture of how we actually operate. Um, the budget is driven by several factors. Uh, one of those is the need to maintain the infrastructure that, uh, the city's invested in over the years. That would include parks, it would include bridges, streets, uh, buildings like this. Also to address as the city grows, uh, the possibility of maybe needing new structures or else replacing those that are becoming worn out and obsolete. So that's an ongoing pressure. Uh, this year in particular, we're looking at, uh, some kind of unprecedented, though, uh, somewhat familiar economic pressures. Uh, we have really high inflation going on right now. Uh, we've got, um, so a hi- an unemployment rate that is also historically high, which is, I'm sorry, it's really, really low. Let me get that one right. That's putting pressure on the city. We feel it just like a regular, regular business does. It's hard for us to find qualified employees, and in many cases, it's very hard for us to keep those employees, uh, because there's just not enough people in job market. Also with inflation, a lot of those wages have been increasing. And so it's a balance that we fight that's very similar to what you would have in private industry. Uh, also, we're finding that with the, uh, the growth of the federal and the state government, there's a number of laws that we have to continue to be up on, to comply with. And, uh, it seems like there's just a lot more people playing in our sandbox, which does complicate the way the op- we operate the city. However, ever all through that, um, we still have a budget that is balanced. And we're proud to say that we believe that it's an efficient budget. It's a budget that addresses the needs of the city and the agenda that, uh, that we're given through the city council to provide the services and keep the manpower in the ways that we can with the limited resources of, uh, of the taxpayer. And, uh, we take that very seriously. And, um, every year, that's, uh, that's a constant, constant pressure that I believe keeps us efficient. Eric? So what I'm showing you now is a slide that, um, represents the general fund budget. Now, the city has a number of different funds. The general fund is the main operations budget of the city. Uh, that's where things like police and fire services are put in there, parks and recreation, uh, administration, um, community development. That's where the main operations of the city occur. Uh, some of the other funds might be the Housing Authority, the Building Authority, where debt service might be maintained. Some of the transfers from debt service go in the general fund, go to the Building Authority to, um, pay for things like buildings that are that are being built. This year, the general fund budget is ninety-eight million dollars, just under a hundred million dollars. The total budget this year, uh, is about a hundred and sixty-two million dollars. Now, that, the reason that it significantly hires, it also includes the construction of buildings which have been bonded for, any reserve funds that are being paid to cover those type of projects. And also it includes things like roads projects, uh, that the money can only be spent on specific, uh, types of, um, infrastructure. So that, uh, that's the budget that we're voting on tonight. The, um, it should be noted that we have a fairly well-balanced revenue picture. We have, uh, thirty-nine percent of our revenue comes from sales tax, which we've actually had a very good year for the last couple of years. Uh, we also have about thirty-five percent in property tax, which has actually been a little bit of a shrinking portion of the pie in relation to the rest. The other third approximately comes from user fees and other smaller taxes. The way that the money is spent in the, um, budget, uh, is we have fifty-three percent that goes to police and fire. So the majority of the money in our general fund is spent for public safety, which we feel like is a core service of the city. Uh, the rest of it is divided up into, um, the various other operations of the city. And, uh, you can, you can find this on our website. We publish the budget annually. Uh, you can find the historical budgets, uh, also under the finance section of the, um, of the budget on our website. Eric? This evening, um, in addition to talking about the budget and considering adoption of the budget, uh, we're considering the adjustment of property taxes. Now, um, property taxes are really the only revenue that the city by, um, statute has the ability to affect. And, um, because of that, it becomes incumbent upon the elected officials to address that revenue uh, when there's a need and then have a public hearing to hear the public's input with regards to a property tax adjustment, and that's what's happening tonight. This slide is also, uh, can be found on the website under finance, and you can actually take, um, your property value, your estimated value. Put the number in and it'll give you an estimate. Not going to say it's absolutely accurate, but it'll give you a pretty, pretty good estimate of where your property tax goes. This year, um, Salt Lake County estimated the value of a typical home in West Valley City at three hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Now, because the state legislator legislation, uh, indicates that they want, um, single-family homes to receive a break because they're good for communities, that's what they're made of. They reduce the amount of value that your home is appraised at or market value by forty-five percent, and you're only taxed on fifty-five percent of the appra- of the market value of your home. If you're a business or you're, uh, a rental property or something like that, you're actually taxed at a hundred percent of the, uh, market value. So you can actually take this, you can put your number in. Uh, if it's three hundred ninety-three thousand like it is in this, in this slide, uh, that would, we've got West Valley City Circle that would generate for West Valley about five hundred forty-five thousand, forty-five dollars. Let me get that right. Um, this is, uh, this is all based on last year's property tax notice. Um, this will be updated after the public hearings and the adjustments of all of the entities that will be adjusting their tax rates. So of your total property tax bill, West Valley City represents about twenty-two percent of your property tax bill. With that twenty-two percent, we provide police, fire, streets, parks, and other services that promote the safety and welfare and upkeep of the community. Uh, tonight, um, Eric, there is a, um, a proposal to adjust the revenue uh, from property tax by ten point eight-nine percent, which means an increase of about fifty-nine dollars per year on the average home. Now, people wonder why, if my value on my home has gone up, why didn't the city get more revenue? And this is a common misconception that because the value of properties have gone up, somehow the revenue has increased at the city. There is a law on the books called Truth in Taxation that says that a taxing entity, for example, the city, can receive the same amount of revenue this year that they received last year, plus any new construction or new growth, and new growth is defined as new buildings in the ground. So what happens in a year where property values increase, which we've all seen that this year significantly, is that value goes up, but the, uh, calculated rate that they allow the city to charge goes down commensurately. So the pot of money that the city receives never changes except for that new growth, regardless of the value of your individual property. Now, you may see some variation in the notice that you get, and that's to be expected because there's a lot of things that go into the mix of that property tax calculation. There's those business properties that I mentioned. Uh, there's, uh, centrally assessed property, which would be things like pipelines, railroads, uh, power lines, things that cross the borders of the, of the city. Those all go into the mix. But the bottom line is that as property values go up, there is no increase in revenue. And we are, uh, compelled to keep the same amount of money, uh, that, uh, that we received the previous year to operate on. Um, you can imagine that if you had to continue to operate and pay your household bills on the same money you received ten years ago, pretty soon you'd be out of business because of the way that inflation has taken a hold. So those are the pressures that the city continues to feel. This notice that's on the screen right now was actually published in the newspaper. And this is a notice that is, uh, required to be presented in this format. Um, I put a couple of notes on there. It should be noted that, uh, last, last year's property tax rate, the actual rate was point zero zero two nine nine. The proposed rate this year is point zero zero two eight, which is actually less than last year. Now, does that mean that we won't be getting as much money as we got last year? No, it won't because the values of everything went up. So this mean, this is just an illustration that shows because the rate down, rate actually went down because values went up, we're still proposing an increase in revenue. So we're voting on the revenue, not the rate. So that's, that's what's going on. Uh, that's composed of two parts this time. There's three point three million dollars that's needed for public safety. That's to maintain the, um, the qualified professional people that we do have under intense pressure from other communities. And, uh, we've seen that, uh, really put pressure on the services we've been able to provide, and, um, that's where that will go. Then there's a small portion called a judgment levy of thirty-one thousand dollars. And what that represents, that small amount, is, uh, an amount that was refunded to other taxing and, um, taxing individuals like businesses that protested their value. They came in and they said, the to the tax, the county tax, uh, adjustment board. They said, you've been taxing us too much for a number of years. They presented evidence that they were, the county agreed, and they gave them a re- a rebate. Well, that also means that the citizens of West Valley have been undertaxed because, um, they, somebody else was paying more taxes than they had to. So that's a quick explanation of judgment. It's pretty small this year. We've seen it as high as several million dollars in the past. This year, it's, uh, kind of a bump on the road, but I thought I'd buy, better explain that to you. So with that, that's, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Welch at this time? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We will now turn the time to Mr. Pyle for some additional comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to thank Jim for doing that presentation, which he does every year and always does in a, in a good and succinct and illustrative fashion. I want, I normally don't add any commentary to what Mr. Welch, uh, presents each year, but this year I wanted to add just a little further flavor on what was going with the, on specifically with the property tax uh, portion of the request and and why that is and how we got there. So in my tenure now at the, the city, um, normally every four to five years-ish, not fixed, but you know, kind of in that neighborhood, will have a property tax increase proposal for operations, and that'll normally happen because of some of the conditions that Jim has talked about. And there's usually some sort of trigger, a bad economic situation or whatever that might be. Um, and the interesting thing about that is although the reasons vary, the timing is kind of, kind of the same. Why would that be the same? The, the reason is, is because in all the years that we don't ask for a property tax increase operationally, we're making up for, um, increased costs and needs in different ways, right? We're seeing increases in revenues from an economic development standpoint. We're seeing cost controls or new ways to use technology or whatever to to control costs. And so even though cross costs still grow, and as historically it goes, it's roughly around a two percent rate over the last twenty-plus years. Uh, we're not increasing our overall revenue by that same amount. Uh, our sales tax, uh, has traditionally done very well. But as Jim just presented, sales tax is only about a third of the overall budget, so it doesn't make up all of the shortfall of that. Eventually, really kind of my point is there's some trigger that ends up bringing us to a point where we need to ask for that increase. That trigger in this particular budget year is a result of a occurrence that happened last year in July. And, uh, so the council members that were here at the time will remember, we were in a situation last summer. This was in July, right after we had passed the previous budget, where, um, Salt Lake City came out and announced they were giving a, I think it was some twenty percent, um, increase to their police department. At that time, uh, we had just given the, the police department and the officers and personnel well-deserved a, a increase. And it was a pretty significant then. Inflationary pressures were already increasing. We were also down twenty-five position, uh, positions at the time, which for anybody in the audience who might not know, we have approximately two hundred and fifteen sworn officers in our police department. So you can see that's a pretty hefty percentage. The reason we were down twenty-five were a multiplicity of, of reasons. There was a lot of just national things that were going on in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one timeframe that were contributing to making it hard to recruit and hire and retain. We also had other local pressures. Taylorsville, for example, had just taken some of our officers as they were, um, creating their own police department due to, and they were able to do so by offering much higher wages. We estimated at the time in July that we would lose as much as twenty-five more officers to Salt Lake in the environment that they had put together, that they had created by putting this, uh, raise in place. It's twenty-five, uh, uh, unrealistic number. Was that just fear? No, that was experience we had seen before, literally. So it was not anything out of the possible realm or even the probable realm that that wouldn't indeed happen with that significant of a raise on Salt Lake's, uh, part. So therefore, I came to the council at that time in July, and I proposed that we go outside of our normal process and institute another raise, frankly, to match what was going on in Salt Lake. Uh, it was a very expensive raise. It was three, we estimated at the time it was going to be about three point five million dollars. Ended up, when it ended up being annualized to about three point three million dollars, which is the property tax increase amount that we're asking for this year. I said at the time in a memo and and in discussions with the council that, uh, one option would be, and we certainly would look at that, that possibly we would be able to make up that three that 3.3 million dollars in economic growth, the other methods that we have done in the past, and, uh, not have to have a property tax increase. But I believe I stated in that memo, I'm sure I said in discussion that the other pressure we're going to face a year from now, now being last July, and here we are, is it will still have other inflationary pressures. We're still going to have that same, uh, environment and public safety. We're going to have other, uh, increases to the employee group generally, and that did occur. In addition to the 3.3 million dollars in this current budget proposal, as we've discussed for the last six years, or six months, sorry, seemed maybe like six years a little bit. Um, there was a total of $6 million in increases. So when you add the 3.3 million that we put in place last year, we're talking about over $9 million in increases that we had to come up with just to keep our operations sustained. Not grow them, not add officers, not put new positions in place, but simply to maintain that, which we did. For all except for that 3.3 million dollars. And so, once we rolled around to the beginning of the budget process again, I came back to the council and said, yeah, it looks like we are going to have to include that portion. So what would that be roughly about a third of that increase that I'm talking about? In a proposal for a property tax increase, and so that's why we're here today. In any normal year, I kind of alluded to this. There are lots of different pressures and peripheral issues that she could talk about that contribute to that. And those are all actually very valid, uh, concerns and reasons and, and things that contribute to that. But when you get right down to it, that was the reason. Um, we had that increase. We chose to bite that increase off. I fully support it. I still think it was the right thing to do. I think we've been proven right in that. We've maintained our officers. They have stayed with us. Uh, we've had a stable work environment in a national and state environment that has been very hard to keep police officers in. And so what we planned on worked, but of course it had a cost and a consequence to it. And we did our best to make sure that we looked at every stone to hopefully not have to do that. But in the end, our prediction was correct and we needed to ask for that. So as usual, that's probably a longer explanation than I meant to, to start with. But hopefully that was pretty clear as to, uh, why we are here with the property tax increase we're requesting tonight. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right. Uh, we'll, so we'll open the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. And state, please state your name and your address for the record. And the main reason for the address is if we need to contact you after to give you some information, we know where to get ahold of you at. So thank you for that consideration. So we'll now open the public hearing. And it's been explained pretty well. So everybody got a number at the door so we could be orderly. So number one.
So you can hear me. I'm taking off my mask. Hey, I'm Elaine Johnson. I live on King Valley Road in West Valley City. And I'm here because news reports warranted a substantial increase in property taxes with a reporter asking for residents to contact organizations about items on their tax form to give input. As a result, I got a message from the finance director and one city council rep, and they both claimed West Valley City didn't get a tax increase because of property value increase. But on my form, there is a difference. And so, uh, my property value increase came from something I didn't do. The tax form claims that I can repeal to the county, but my neighbor tried that. He lived in a two-bedroom, uh, split entry, no garage, and he was being compared to a house with more bedrooms and either a double carport or a garage. They denied his claim. It's useless to do that on the residential level. The reason my property tax jump, in my opinion, comes from the actions of real estate investors who keep selling property not for families to live in here in West Valley, but for, um, businesses who rent property. According to the Salt Lake County, um, media, Board of Realtors, the median price is over half a million dollars. And there's nothing I can do about it, but there is a council member who is a real estate investor. And in my opinion, he has a conflict of interest and shouldn't vote on this one. The impact of the city council decisions in another area of my tax form, I think needs to be addressed. According to Granger Hunter Improvement meeting, West Valley officials didn't consult the water company when they, when they, uh, approved three major apartment building complexes without making sure the, the water company could provide water for those areas. And my Granger Hunter tax rate increased 50%. And the rental units in these apartments, if their utilities are in their rent, then they have little or no incentive to help with the conservation of water as being recommended by Governor and Mayor Jenny Wilson. And so the other thing that I have about these apartments is they look good to start. But I lived in Mark IV before you tore it down to put in Embassy Suites. My two-year-old standing in his doorway could actually make the floor settle. And so that, the management doesn't always maintain it. Or like my daughter experienced in Minot, North Dakota, when the city had a flood, they ended up with water in their, in their basement and that management company would not replace the carpet. So there are issues that maintenance doesn't just happen with neighborhoods, it's with the businesses too. And the other, uh, decision that the council made, that this council made, um, that could impact my property value is the Astro Turk ordinance. And I was pleased to see that until I saw that the, a city official was going to tell me I needed a permit for them to do that. I had to have a city official approve it and I had to have that, do it their way. Now, I've lived in my house 45 years. I have 44 years of maintenance. I am a master gardener without the certificate and I have a bachelor's degree. I don't need the city to tell me how to mount landscape in my yard. The other thing-
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
One more thing. You don't have a never-ending money supply. We don't have money. We can just give you because we don't have it to give you.
Thank you. Number two?
Literally, I'm a number two. And I think you would all agree. Um, first comment I'd like to make in my three minutes is, you know what amazes me? That this is one of the largest meetings that the city traditionally has. We expected a lot of people to come and, and, and talk. We didn't get it. But the thing that really amazes me is we have a council person that is the mayor pro tem, has run to be mayor what the last three or four times, but was not able to attend the biggest meeting of the year for the city. I'm sorry. The man will never get my vote for anything. Um, but now I don't have a problem with the tax increase. You know, I want the police department to be funded. I want the fire department to be funded. I want the people to make a decent wage. Um, everything is going up. I see it in my business. Um, uh, it's, it's cost more to do everything. But now, as I've stated a couple of times, I do have a problem sometimes with the way the tax dollars are spent on certain things. I disagree with that. And I think I've asked about some things that could be spent out of tax dollars and can't make it happen. I'm kind of a strange person that, uh, I think it's cheaper to maintain vehicles and property than to demolish and buy new ones. Now maybe we get some buildings that it's cheaper to, uh, to maintain than to demolish. I don't know. I'm not smart enough for all that. But it's like I said, my philosophy has always been to maintain and not replace until you have to. I think some of you know what I'm talking about. And the thing I'm talking about on tax dollars is the lack of maintenance and care that goes into one of the city's expensive vehicles. I was told the vote was going to come up or whatever you do to get a new, a new vehicle for this. I will fight that tooth and nail until we figure out how to take care of what we've got. Since I started complaining about this vehicle, uh, where it used to be parked out where you could see it, it now it is backed in as tight as it can get to a storage building in the back of one of the city buildings, tucked back in as tight as it can be into the bushes and weeds. So I don't know if it's trying to be out of sight, out of mind. But I'm kind of a pit bull when it comes to, to certain things. Like I say, I'm all for the tax increase. We need it. We need the money for people. But you know, I think we need to watch how it is, how it is spent. Thanks.
Thank you. Number three?
What's my number two?
I think you take it home in Freeman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see you. Steve Bueller, 3540 South, 4000 West. I'm happy to be able to share my perspective today. As consumers, we can go anywhere we want for services and goods that we buy. We can shop outside of West Valley City based on price or based on quality. But that's not so when it comes to public safety. If I call 911, I don't get to choose which police department or fire department I want to have respond. I don't get to choose which police officer or paramedic I want to have come to my rescue. I have no choice but to rely on those public safety employees that the city is able to provide. I understand that although I don't have a choice about who responds to my call for help, the police officers, firefighters, and paramedics do have a choice. The best of them will work for cities where they have the best working conditions, possibilities of advancement, best training and equipment, and best pay. The tax adjustment before you tonight is necessary to fulfill a public safety commitment that this council made last year when it gave a large pay increase to public safety employees in order to compete with other departments. Tonight is the night that you have to pay that bill. In June 2020, amidst the protests, demonstrations, and calls to defund the police, then Mayor Ron Bigelow asked me to author a letter in support of our police department. I want to read a little bit of that letter. As elected representatives of the residents of West Valley City and as the stewards of the city, we write to formally express our appreciation, appreciation and support of the West Valley City Police Department. The first priority of city government is public safety. Without safety and security in our homes and property and commerce and transit, and in our social circles and family gatherings, we lose the very foundation of civil society. Our most sacred responsibility to the residents is to preserve and maintain peace within our borders. The discharge of this duty falls largely upon our police department. It's not, uh, important that I authored that letter. What's important tonight is that the five of you who were on the council in 2020, without a single word of dissent, supported that letter and that statement to the police department and allowed us to publish it. Want to remind you that although you're elected by a popular vote, you're not elected to be popular. There are always going to be people that, uh, don't understand the truth in taxation and how things work and think that we should be able to get funds from other sources. We've had people on the council from time to time say things like that. And as much as I hate paying taxes, I hate more having to dial 911. I expect you to support the public safety departments and all of the residents in passing the tax increase and supporting the only police and fire departments that we have to come to our aid in our time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Number four?
I will also remove my mask for clarity. Uh, my name is Misty Smith. Uh, I've been a resident of West Valley since, uh, 2004 approximately. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Misty, can we get your address?
Yes, uh, 3639 West, 4310 South. Thank you. Uh, the reason I'm here today is not to fully be in opposition or support, but to ask you as the council to use the information provided to consider options as efficiently as possible. The reason I say this is although I'm blessed to be able to afford the tax increases this year, I know many of my neighbors and concerned, uh, people in the area are struggling. Um, right now we're suffering a death by a thousand cuts. Um, it's not just the property tax increases, it's the library tax increases. It's the, um, Granger Hunter, uh, Improvement District increases, everything happening at once. So if there is a way to possibly, um, instead of adjusting 11 to 19%, depending on who you speak with, um, to consider um, a lesser increase because I realize everything is costing more right now. Uh, we need to meet the needs of the people and the safety of the area. But can we do that as efficiently as possible without burdening property tax, uh, tech or homeowners and property taxpayers too much? Um, so please consider the elderly, the handicapped, the disabled, the individuals who are not able to come here today. And, and think about the two individuals on my street who have had to move because financial burdens have made them downsize and move in with other family members. Because they can't accommodate the increased financial burdens that are being put on them as they age out. Uh, or be, or because their health limits their ability to live on their own any longer. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. And thank you for your service and the service of the fire and police departments. Have a good evening.
And number five?
Wilmer Fajardo, 2997 South Tower Hillway, West Valley City. I guess it's something that we all agree is our police officers and fire departments, as a budget, we cannot touch. You know, it's a budget that we have to respect. But when it comes to increase, because we want to build a huge building that we don't need, that's when I have problem with. I think we need to be humble enough to say, hey, this is what we cannot afford about something that we don't need is what we need, you know? And I think we don't need a big building. We need something like enough to do our jobs, your job or whatever is important. But I think, um, I've been living in this address. Next month is going to be three years. In, in three years is $500 increase in three years. That's a lot of money. I work hard for my money. You know? And like she says, a lot of people, they cannot afford. And I don't want to be one of those people that one day I have to leave the city because I cannot afford paying almost $3,000 in taxes. But I do agree that it's a lot of improvement that needs to be done. And I'm really happy to know that we have smart people behind this desk. Like Mr. Wayne, when he's playing, he's playing so perfect. He's amazed. Things that we don't know. And I wish this room was full of people to understand what's going on behind your desk. You know, like, uh, these gentlemen, they explain everything really, really good. But, um, put it in your heart, you know, what we really need, you know? Um, maybe, um, have an architect there. He say, hey, I can do this for this much, you know? But, um, one thing I'm, I'm very proud is I'm original from Honduras. And in Honduras, when people pay taxes, you don't see the money. The money is going to their pocket. In here in United States, the money we see on the street, we see with good police officers, good fire departments, good schools, good parks, nice streets, you know? So that made me proud that what you guys do is something that is amazing. So thank you so much and help us with the taxes to keep it in, in the right budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six?
Daryl Curtis, uh, 3860 South Marcia Drive, West Valley City. Um, there's just a few things that I want to mention. Uh, don't forget you raised taxes last year with the, uh, streetlights. You may call it a fee, but I always thought of it squacks, uh, quacks like a duck. It is a duck. And, uh, and that was 1.3 million, uh, that you, you received. My disappointment was you don't have the revenue that we was there before. Any fee like that should be in, an enhancement to what we, what you already have, not to replace it. Um, because you voted on it, you raised it, and so we pay it. But, um, it would be nice to see just not 1.3 million, but even additional revenue there for the streetlights. Administrative expenditures went up 7% in one year, 30% in four years. Um, it would be nice to have that broken out for, for us as a public to understand what in administrative are you doing that causes us to go up? what in administrative are you doing that causes us to go up about four hundred thousand dollars in in four years? The fitness center, it continues to be a little bit of a drain, you know? You it's something that's that's there. It's it can be good. But I've I've had a lot of friends and neighbors that don't go to the fitness center. They go to Vasa or they go to other places because it's not as kept up as nice. It's not as pleasing. It looks more like a government facility that that could be improved. The cultural center. Also, I remember years and years ago, I came to a city council meeting when they were first discussing the cultural center. Don't worry, don't worry, it'll be a revenue. We'll get lots of money off of the cultural center. And I have never, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look, but I don't know if you've ever made revenue off of the cultural center. It's continues to be about a one point four million dollar drain every year. Tax increase announcement, you said, oh, well, we put it in the paper. A lot of us don't even get papers anymore. So we get that little green thing in our utility bill. You know, maybe something like that, because I'm always a little concerned when you announce something and you have to give announcement to people that live within three hundred and fifty feet, I believe, of of what is taking place. Well, that doesn't, I say a half a mile, even a mile of whatever taking place, let the people know. Then you're going to get more people turning out to pay attention to what's happening. I I think it's important that you, as a city council, you should be putting together a budget, not the city manager, not the city administration. You should be digging in and being making sure that you know what every expenditure is going to, not just given the rubber stamp. Because I I mean, it's not so much that I'm opposed to the budget increase or anything like that. I just think you, as our representatives, need to be making sure you have that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number seven.
Jim Bissack again. I want to thank Jim Welch for his elegant explanation. The I believe it's been five years now that I've been coming to the meetings and stuff. And Mr. Pyle said, you know, every year he gives the explanation. It's gotten so much better and so much more detailed, which makes it easier to tell other people about it. It makes it easier for you guys, too. I don't want to say dumb down any of it, but it does make it better. Former Councilman Bueller on his got to pay the police, the thirteen, we got to pay our police. The one thing that everybody keeps Salt Lake, they have an automatic one dollar. We're going to be the highest no matter what. Their council, they got a billion dollar budget. Or we didn't hit the hundred million, which I thought we I would have lost that bet if you guys would have all done it. But it's we need to be conservatives on every single dollar from this point. Right now, we're paying for that police increase. But you're going to open the budget four more times throughout the year. And you're gonna, we're gonna find all these different things that need to be done. These department heads need to be budgeting for things that are gonna break. If we got something that has a ten year lifespan and we're at year twelve, we better had a couple of years of putting money away for it, a little bit to take care of it. So we don't have these two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a water system at one of the golf courses, you know? Hold the department heads accountable for every single dollar that they're spending. We got, I know we got some new conservatives on here. Make them use every single dollar the right way. And remember, it's the people in West Valley City pay that bill. A lot of them don't live in West Valley City. West Valley City is a check to them. Our city manager doesn't live in West Valley City, you know? It's it's sad. But we've got to pay for our police departments. We got to pay for our services that are going around. On the streetlight thing, if I recall, we didn't take any money away from the budget. That four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's still there. It's part of the budget. So we added the money because people want our streetlights to be fixed. You drive around the city at night in some of the areas. It's dark. We need, we need to do services like that. I'm one hundred percent for the tax increase because it's the police and fire, and we've got to keep our police and fire the best as they are, heretofore. Nobody else has that. Less than four percent in the United States. We have the best police department, I would say, in the United States. And thank you, Chief Jacobs.
Thank you. Number eight.
Hello again. Miles Wind, twenty seven sixty six West, twenty eight ninety South. I thought it was interesting that they mentioned about the three hundred and fifty feet thing is, again, I didn't know about this was going to be happening. And I'm just glad I happened to be here tonight to to hear about it. Very informative. But I also feel like there's no reason why you wouldn't vote yes on this. So it's kind of interesting, like we have this opportunity to speak, but I feel like your minds are probably already made up. I'll be very surprised if you go one way versus another. I just want to put it out there that I don't necessarily think that that home value thing is very accurate. And I personally work for one of the largest financial institutions in the world. And whether or not, whether or not anyone's willing to admit it, we're in the midst of a recession. And we mentioned, you know, raise increases earlier and stuff. I got a three percent raise this year that didn't even match the seven percent inflation at the beginning of the year, which is now much higher. So I would like that to somewhat be taken into consideration, even though, like I said, I think your minds are already made up, and there's no reason why you wouldn't vote yes on this because police and fire is worth supporting. But yeah, I just would like to say, I don't think that's very accurate. I think our home values will be going down very soon. We can kind of already see housing issues in general with demand and, you know, again, just the Fed going up and all that jazz. But yeah, I know. That's just all I kind of want to say is just take that into consideration, maybe next time around or what have you. But I'll just be very surprised if you vote no to this, I guess. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number nine. Okay, one couple did leave, so we'll assume they were nine and let's move on to ten. Nope. Oh, you're the last one. We're done? Sorry, I was not understanding our officer in the back telling me you're out of numbers. All right. Was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't get a chance to take a number? Okay. And was there anyone online? Okay, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn it to the council for discussion or a motion. Oh, Tam. That was a cursor. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Councilman Harmon.
Thanks for watching. Couple of things. Regardless of what you hear on the media or from the White House, we're in a recession. They can't change the definition of recession midway through. We are. And most recessions on average last between eighteen to twenty four months. We've got a road to home. I heard on the radio yesterday that sixty percent of US households are living paycheck to paycheck. So as we consider a tax increase, that affects not just the sixty percent, affects all of us, but it really affects and is devastating to the sixty percent, whether they're owners or or renters. The landlord just passes that increase on to the renters. So it's it's for all households. When we bought our house in two thousand and one, our taxes were about a thousand dollars a month or a year. A month would have been really bad. My cousin lived in Chicago at the time, and his taxes, I remember he told me his taxes were seven thousand dollars a year. And I said, oh, man, glad I don't live in Illinois. We'll never get to that stage here. I mean, you know? Well, so in twenty years, my taxes have tripled. And twenty two percent of that is about seventy six dollars a month for me. That's that's not, it's not friendly for the budget. I looked at the two thousand and twelve budget and our budget was sixty five million dollars. So in ten years, we've gone up by, I asked the math wizard on the council, what does that factor in? What's that factor to? And it's fifty percent increase over the last ten years. So when we hear a two percent increase over the last few years, I don't know how that adds up to fifty percent over ten. That doesn't work for me on the math. And I think it was in April or May, and I talked a little bit about this and mentioned that we were heading into recession. And asked about what we could do as far as budget cuts to to make things work and really, without more discussion, without on budget cuts and program modifications to stay within a budget that doesn't increase taxes, I can't vote in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Can you say something?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't think it's the right time for increasing our tax at this point. Inflation is high and gasoline is high, and we have to use a statute to put petroleum to lower the price for the gasoline. And people, they are into very difficult for them to save their money and funding them their money. I think it's very tough time, and I think we can do some then like cutting here and there in our city to basically just, we have to find out ways to manage and go through without increase in taxes at this point. So I will know for this one.
Thank you.
Hey, if I may, just make a few comments. I'm the rookie on the on the council and, you know, I thought it would be, we get to go do ribbon cuttings at parks and things. I don't think it'll be. I'd have to make decisions that would keep me up at night. But over the last couple of weeks, I've been getting a lot of phone calls and emails and on social media, I've seen a lot of comments with regards to this proposed tax increase. One hundred percent of the comments that I received were against it. And when I came to this meeting tonight, I was expecting public comments to be completely against it. And I was surprised to hear it was about fifty fifty split. I was keeping track. If if there's a time to make a decision like this, the only time I would consider it is in support of our public safety. My, I came to this meeting not fully having made a decision, but I I think after hearing the comments tonight, the very well put together presentation, which I appreciate that, I think I would be in support of this.
Yeah, I appreciate the even keel discussion here. I agree that most of the folks who approach initially talk about not wanting to pay more taxes and I don't want to take, I don't want to pay any more taxes either. But the fact of the matter is, in the second breath, they also want more code enforcement and better policing and and competitive salaries and nice streets and everything else. In one of the fastest growing cities and the second biggest city in the state, it just doesn't make sense to want more parks and more facilities and more amenities and not take into account the fact that the city is growing and needs needs more. I'm voting in support, but acknowledge everyone who's spoken on this as well.
Thanks, everyone, for their comments and and sharing their opinions. This this is a difficult thing for all of us to to grapple with, and no one wants to increase the burdens on our residents and businesses. But it's a necessary thing. And if we don't periodically raise the property tax rate, then we're making things less sustainable for our city for the future. This is our most stable revenue source. And and it's the one that will survive, help us survive through recessions. And if if we don't increase it with with inflation, then we're making things more difficult for future councils and staff to be able to provide the services that that our city requires. And it's difficult and and but it's necessary. And I agree with so many people who have spoken that we need to be careful with the funds that we receive. These are this is not our slush fund. This is this is your precious donation to to our city to help us all. But if you if you look through that document that that Jim shared and how much each of us are paying for police and for fire, we are really getting a bargain. It's, it doesn't seem like it's a bargain sometimes, but but for what we're getting with our tax dollars, it's, we're really getting a good quality a good quality product for for what we're paying for. And everything is going up in price right now. So I know it's a burden, but that's why I'm going to vote in favor. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty two dash one two four. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment?
Could I make another comment?
Sure.
And I don't know if I can amend this motion or if you would reconsider amending it. But I'm wondering, as a council, if we can, along with this approval, consider a little more scrutiny on the budget. So when there are non-typical things being run through, so non-operations, a purchase of a new vehicle that doesn't align with the needs or an electric truck or something that the council consider that and approve it rather than just grouping it all in this budget. I mean, I don't want to get into the mundane details every time we have a council meeting, but I'm wondering if we should. There were a couple of comments tonight where we should consider. Is this a need or is this a want? And maybe we should prove those at the time of purchase.
I don't know that that affects necessarily the motion, and I'm not opposed to what you're mentioning, but definitely in our policy and practice as a council, we can ask for that at any time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I I agree with what you're asking for. But I don't think it it's necessarily part of this this resolution. But we can definitely ask for that kind of scrutiny.
So in the future, make a policy that the program mods are addressed one by one instead of just being part of the budget and automatically approved kind of by being in the same room consenting to it.
Yeah, I think I can actually help you out just from a from an explanation and probably help with the audience standpoint there, Mayor, and to Mr. Whitstone's point. And it's not necessarily that it would be obvious because we had a lot of discussion about the budget. But the example that that you used, we don't include the vehicles in the overall budget. You are seeing those as a very specific. You get a list. Sometimes it's multiple vehicles. Sometimes it's one vehicle. And that is approved as basically what we call a program mod or a one time purchase usually out of the the fund balance. And there are budgetary reasons we do that that aren't necessarily related to the scrutiny that you're talking about. But the scrutiny does occur with that process as a as a as a byproduct, I guess, as you would include anyway. Talking about it from that budgetary standpoint, why do we do it that way? Really, frankly, I'd love to have the operational money to have the whole fleet in the operational budget every year. And we used to do that. We used to do that by lease payment. But we don't because our operational budgets are so tight and are mostly already allotted to very specific pots, you know, whether that's personnel costs or Pots, you know, whether that's personnel costs or debt service or. Uh, some sort of a facility cost. There was a question earlier about, you know, why do admin budgets change as an example? It's because you lump a lot of those sorts of costs in there to those types of budgets. Anyway, point being that. Vi- whether it's vehicles, whether it would be buildings, whether it would be. Uh, a lot of times in the past, um, electronic equipment purchases, although we're, we're actually trying to get away from that and move that into the operational budget. Most every one of those kinds of talk, uh. Uh, most of those kinds of capital type purchases that you probably are thinking about are already scrutinized individually outside of the operational budget. As part of a budget opening process. I'll add one last comment to that. There are people that don't like that. Out there. They think it should all be budgeted in the, the regular. General fund budget approved one time a year and, and that should be all part of that plan beforehand. And I don't disagree with that either. There are a lot of those purchases I would. Like to have the budget flexibility that they were uh, in the operational budget, but again, I already said that. Byproduct of the way we are running the budget, you're seeing all those purchases individually anyway. So that's not, that's not something that you're not getting a second look at, so to speak, throughout the budget year.
That answer.
Can I add one more?
Sure.
Since I was just gonna say, for an example, you will have coming to you over the next few weeks and you'll remember this from the budget discussion earlier. We've got a ton of one-time purchases that we would like to propose using some fund balance uh, to you. For example. I have a list of parks types improvements, playground equipment replacement, uh, parking lot replacements, that sort of thing. You'll be seeing that here in the next few weeks from a very individual, one item at a time. Uh, recommendation and then ability to either approve it or not approve it, however you guys uh. Decide that you'd like to handle that.
Okay. All right, I was just gonna um. Say that I've been on the council for ten years. We've had this discussion more than once. Um, budget meetings have gone until ten-thirty at night. And there's always the philosophical, you know, philosophy of, why don't you just raise our taxes two percent every year? And not do these big ten percent increases. For me personally, I wanna hold staff accountable and squeak as much out. Of those funds and not just have an automatic raise that, oh, we could go buy anything we want to, and they do do it responsibly, but it does hold their feet to the fire to be. Frugal and to use those monies where they're necessary. So. I would rather do the tax increases when we need them, not just automatically put them in the schedule. So that's just one of my philosophy things. And that's it. Are there any other comments? Okay, I will turn it to Ms. Kamak for a roll call vote.
Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
No.
Councilman Hune.
No.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming and we do listen to you, so we appreciate it. We have one more resolution on our agenda. It is twenty-two dash one-twenty-five. I'll turn it over to Mister Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. So wrapped up in the budget, I didn't even have it up. So uh, this is a resolution authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement. With UDOT for Mountain View Corridor improvements. Um. There's no cost at this time or attached to this particular resolution. It really basically is some conveyance. Of right-ofways, various properties that as they were constructing the Mountain View Corridor, they asked us, do you want that? Do you want that for? Water detention? Do you want it for possible recreational expansion in the future? Those sorts of things. So that's what this is for.
Okay, thank you. So I will turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-two dash one-two-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamak.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion pass of unanimously.
Thank you. We just have one more motion. No one wants to go home.
To you too.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We're excused. Again, thank you for coming out tonight.